All right, now we have Brenda, Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation. Good to see you.
Good evening, Council. I think we had breakfast together this morning, right?
Yes, we did.
Without any food, unfortunately.
When I can get my phone to work, that is.
That's right. So you all know me. I am Brenda Strannick, President, Chief Operating Officer for the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation. By way of background, I was born and raised here. I raised my kids here. I'm raising my grandkids here, and my great-grandkids are here as well. So nobody loves this community more than me. I know that many of you share that love, but nobody loves it more than me. Being a child of six, a family of six kids, I was seldom called Brenda. It was probably more "hey you" or one of my other siblings' names. So I share Scott's appreciation for multiple names. So Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation is a private nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization formed by the local six jurisdictions back in 1994. In 1996, we became an economic development district. And I know some of you have heard this before, but just by way of background and for some precedents. Governed by a board of directors, and my board president or chair happens to be in the room, Margaret Fernandez. So I appreciate her being here as well this evening. We're a very small staff, staff of four. We used to have about 12 employees. We're much leaner and about 400 times more efficient than we were once upon a time. And of course, you know that we provide regional economic development to the two counties, Yubansutter Counties and the city within. So business creation and attraction, attraction is something that we, one of the four main pillars that we perform. It's probably our most challenging. We've talked about this before, the lack of infrastructure to support these RFIs that we get out of GSAC is very difficult for us to respond to. When a business is seeking a million square foot under roof, we don't have it here. If they're seeking 500 acres, it's certainly not going to happen in the city of Yuba City. But we try to be as responsive to those RFIs when we can on a regional basis. Business expansion and retention, that is our, I believe that's our shining star. I think we do that best. Myself, my staff can walk into nearly any business in the city of Yuba City and throughout the two-county area and generally know the owners by name. We know their pets. We know their kids. It is relational. We do that piece of this very well, and you'll hear a little bit more about that in a minute. Of course, we have a business lending program. And again, to support our lack of ability to respond to these RFIs, we support infrastructure. And we'll talk about that a little bit in the form of how we do that and what it means to the community. So you know, we serve Yubansutter Counties, city of Live Oak, Marysville, and Wheatland from a jurisdictional perspective, and then, of course, all regional businesses. And Yuba City is not listed because you don't contract with us for actual economic development services. We still serve your businesses. We just don't necessarily serve the city in the same way we serve the other communities. So regional lending over the years, 229 local loans, $15 million in lending. Total investment leveraged was about $1.3 million or $103 million, creating 688 new jobs, retaining 474 jobs, and creating 84 startups. Pretty impressive from a tiny little group that borrows money from public institutions and provides all that risk to ourselves but benefits our local businesses. So lending in the city of Yuba City over these years, we've made 66 loans totaling about $7 million, total investment of $25 million. I don't need to read this to you. 230 jobs and 114 jobs retained, 33 startups. You, the city of Yuba City, has been 50% of all of our lending activity throughout the years and continues about at that same rate. So all of the lending we do, of all the lending we do, 50% is done within the city limits. So some folks you might recognize. I know you've seen this before, Linda Soda Bar, Bridge Coffee, Carl's Jr., to name a few. Certainly businesses that are a big presence in our community and many times would not have even gotten off the ground had they not been able to receive funding, financing through the EDC. So you all know about our comprehensive economic development strategy. It is a requirement of the Economic Development Administration. So that is part of our obligation to being a district. You, for the first time in 15 years, participated in this last year. And we rewrite it, we update it annually, and we rewrite it every five years. This year was our five-year. So the document came before you for acceptance in July, and off we go. And I'll tell you why that's important in a minute. So we talk about business retention and expansion, and that's something that I'm very proud of, of what we do here. You know, some components to that are the business walks, the business resource seminars. We manage the Yuba Sutter Business Consortium. It is actually a subcommittee of the EDC. We assemble industry-specific businesses. We created, for example, the Yuba Sutter Healthcare Council. We created the Manufacturers Association. And oftentimes, those ebb and flow based on the need of those industries. We, on a day-to-day basis, provide one-on-one business assistance. And then, we have most recently created, in conjunction with the Chamber, and financially supported, a business-specific webinar collaboration. So grant, the way we can provide financial support to our local jurisdictions are through our grant writing, research, and management. We also can assist you with waivers through the CDBG program. Sometimes that can be a pretty tricky thing to navigate. And then, we also can do other special projects, and you'll see some examples of that in a minute. So other stuff we do, I am the Executive Director for the Sutter County Community Action Agency and the Yuba County Community Services Commission. Those are the agencies that receive CSBG funds to combat poverty in the region. We most recently, or started last year, I guess, took the lead for both counties in the census marketing campaign. Pleased to announce that yesterday was the close of the census, and we actually finished above our targeted goals and exceeded the 2010 percentage count of the community. So super excited about that amid COVID, when we couldn't get out and do what we had intended to do. We managed to pivot and be able to accomplish the goal. So we also have managed the COVID-related loan and grant programs for Yubansutter Counties and the city of Marysville. And I wanted to talk about that. I had some additional notes. You'll bear with me. So as you're aware, Sutter County enacted an emergency loan program with general fund money. This was early on in April. We processed 46 applications within 10 days, completely processed them, loan applications. And the majority of those were processed in the first three. We made 14 loans totaling $600,000. 12 of those loans totaling $560,000 were made to city of Yuba City businesses. So the majority of that money stayed in your city. Sutter County Emergency Grant Program, we took off on the first round of that, processed about 110 applications. We made 41 total grants, just shy of about $352,000. 39 of those grants were made to Yuba City businesses totaling $334,000 and some change, $1,000. So in conjunction with running those programs for Sutter County and for, yeah, both for Sutter County, the loan and the grant program, we also ran concurrently programs for Yuba County in both grants and loans, and the city of Marysville as well. This week, we kicked off an additional Sutter County Grant Program, $1.5 million and another $800,000 for local nonprofits. So we have been busy getting money into your community into the hands of our local businesses. Some of the other things that we do, we share seats on the Chamber Board of, the Chamber of Commerce Board. I also sit on the GAC Committee and their Economic Development Committee as their lead. The Yuba Sutter Lodging Association, Homeless Consortium, California Finance Consortium, North Central Counties Consortium, and Sutter Community Affordable Housing with Council Member Cardoza. So the partnership with the EDC, you have agreed over last year to provide a $25,000 investment so that you can be included in the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy and become part of the district again. That is, what that does, it allows you the ability to, number one, be eligible for USDA grants because it is incumbent on you being included in a SEDS, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. So that's what your contribution in 2019 bought, paid for. And we also have, at times, suggested that we consider, at your need, a fee-for-service arrangement. So whether it be grant writing or research, we too have some very robust research tools, both front-facing access through the Internet and then back a house that's a little more robust, and we can do things a little more specifically. So here's what we can do for you should you find a need and think that there's a right partnership fit. We can do grant research, writing, and management. We can create community profiles. I do believe that we assisted with GSAC when they created your front-facing page on their website. Statistical data, on-demand, site selector event, special project management, and then, of course, graphic design and publication production. And so I think there's one thought that I would ask you to consider or recognize and realize. We have written and received, successfully written and received, tens of millions of dollars in grants for the others in our community. They range from everything from infrastructure to water, wastewater, HHS, OES, base realignment and closure, planning grants. Every time I can offset a department's budget, for example, OES, with $300,000 for their mandated five-year mitigation planning, it's $300,000 that they have in their budget that they're not going to spend on something that they could be spending somewhere else. So we've talked about it at the staff level with Diana. It's important for us to be able to communicate with staff so that they understand where they can come to us when they need help. And that's all we want to do, is be helpful. One $1 million grant that we're successful in obtaining for you pays for 40 years of your SEDS participation. It's too easy, in my opinion. You need to be reaching out. You need to ask. We need to be working together. And I think we can provide significant benefit to the city of Yuba City should you have a need and want to participate that way. Happy to answer any questions?
Did you, yeah?
Mr. Mayor. First, thanks for the presentation, and thanks for taking the time to meet with me personally several weeks back. I appreciated that. As I mentioned before, kind of thirsty for knowledge, so it's good to get it straight from the person. And you are the person.
We don't know what we don't know.
I guess the first question I have, and this is probably a simple one, is the slide that you had up there, there was 25 or 26 million in contributions to the city. That's awesome.
Whoops.
I think this is probably going to tie into your discussion on the grants.
So which slide?
Keep going. One more, I think. There you go.
The loans.
No, the 25 in total investment, 25, 900. So help me understand a little bit, you know, what was all that? Is this grant stuff that you did for us or?
So no, this is actual leverage for gap funding or startup funding that we seeded. So you come to me, you have a million-dollar project, your bank's going to put in 700,000. We can do 200,000. You're going to put in 100,000 yourself. Now we have a million-dollar project. So we've done $25 million in projects total, only through our loan program.
Gotcha.
So it's just leverage.
Yeah, one thing that continues to, I think, ring true in both conversations is having that business development person or a community impact specialist, you know, whatever you want to call it, that is responsive to both entities. And I guess, you know, my, again, history with the city is, is that we sort of sputtered and, and this goes way back. This isn't just recent. We sort of sputtered with economic development. I know economic development people will probably maybe take some issue with that, but, you know, what I've seen is some good stuff, but maybe not as longstanding. So, you know, my takeaway from both presentations is we need to consider, you know, having somebody that you, both GSAC and the EDC, can reach out to. I think the last thing I would have, it's just a question, is, you know, we have a representative on GSAC, and maybe Scott, Steve, Michael will want to weigh in on this, too. We have a representative on GSAC, and we have a representative on your board as well. Would it be valuable to have that same person on both boards rather than one going one way and one going the other, in your opinion?
It probably wouldn't hurt from ARPA's perspective so that the information that they're bringing back, hopefully to the rest of you that are on the council, is consistent and there's a better understanding of how to collaborate those efforts.
I'll keep my distance and try to, you know, project loud enough, but I would agree with what Brenda said. I think that would be, again, also knowing that council members are volunteers, and your time is valuable and...
But we're Zooming now, so it's, we don't...
Exactly. But I think that is helpful, that I'd understand and know what each party's doing, rather than aligning with, you know, two different members.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Brenda.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Brenda, very well done. I really appreciate you outlining and really zeroing in on the issues for us as a city. And I do agree with you, Vice Mayor Boomgartner, the concept or the idea of having a representative from the city, the council, or we definitely need to have an employee from the city that works specifically with economic development. In particular, when we're trying to build, if we build anything with infrastructure, where we're very weak, and not having that laid out in advance for us to do any particular development that could just be done within most people's expectations is a couple of years, and the reality becomes 10 to 20 years because the funding is difficult and the planning, and we're just not always doing that correctly. I say from my perspective. But my question to you is, knowing all of those things and the years that your team, and I know you and I know your team really well, what do you think is the biggest challenge that we need to, as a council, be focused on economic development, from your perspective? Like, what's the things that we need to start understanding better as a policy and financial decision-makers, as, from your perspective of being in our community and knowing you're so engaged with many folks?
So my short answer to that would probably be, you know, we've done a number of planning sessions. We've done some visioning sessions within the city of Yuba City and regionally. I think we need to buy into a plan. We need to evaluate that plan, prioritize the needs to meet that plan. You know, if it's our goal to have an industrial park located within the current city limits or somewhere else, we need to be doing that now, right? And we can be looking for the infrastructure to support that, the water, the wastewater, the power, whatever that need is. I think we have failed ourselves in, we've had lots of planning, but we really never have taken that plan and run with it. We really have never prioritized that. And so it's a great plan, and it says we need some new beautification things, some new signs at the city entrances. That's not what I need as an economic developer to help you get to where you really need to go.
Right.
So we just need to set those priorities.
And I'm glad you said that. If you go to the last slide, because that's when you're talking about the resources, that potentially you could help us as a city to find some grants and help us pay for a position that has been mentioned. Or Councilman Shaw also mentioned himself of the need of, you know, better coordination and management of these things. So if we were able to get to that place, EDC could help us with potentially looking for some funding to pay for this individual or to pay for this particular grant or plan that you mentioned. The other part that we haven't integrated, and maybe the mayor will bring this in, is to our Economic Development Commission that the city has as well. And I believe that you met with him, Mayor, so you'll probably add to that. And so I'm a big, I'm a person that likes to have things coordinated and not, you know, duplicating and spinning our wheels in separate directions. It just doesn't make sense to me. It just baffles me. So...
So there's a couple, a couple things that we, as a community, could do. You know, there could be an opportunity where we bring a Yuba City-specific economic developer into our organization. It's much less expensive for me to hire people than it is for you all. We can get quality people. We can offer them guidance and bring them through that way. But they could be specific to you, or half-time to you and half-time to something else. I mean, there's lots of ways we can position that. I think it's, I'm going to go back to what I said just a few minutes ago. Our first step is to prioritize what our need is. Let's figure out what our vision is, and then let's prioritize that before you hire someone. And I say that because you're going to want somebody that can specifically manage whatever that vision is. And my skill set is different than Scott Michael Stevens' skill set versus Barry's, right? And so we really need to understand what you need. Do you need a salesman? Or do you need somebody that can understand and respond to an RFP like I can?
Right.
That knows our properties inside and out, knows how much power there is on 40 Mile Road and where the substations are and where, you know, there's different skill sets that are going to be required to accomplish whatever we determine that goal is.
I'm glad that you said that because it makes me think about when we're doing, you know, improving through GSAC, you know, improving the roads or through, you know, the flood control agency. We have all these commissions and committees, and this economic development person, whatever that title becomes or whatever that duties become, they really need to be interconnected to all of those pieces to make sure that we're just not swimming out there in different directions, that we really get behind something and make something happen.
You need to be specific on what your need is, and then find the person that can meet that need.
And I like getting things done, so I really would appreciate that. Okay, thanks.
Next, through the mayor, right? So Brenda, thanks for being here tonight. You've already hit on some things, and I think the past conversations have brought up frustrations that the city has just felt over the past decade or more. And, you know, taking the history lesson back, at one time, you guys were our economic development. Then we took it in-house and got no better results, you know? And then, we're trying to go, well, what do we need to do? And we're all trying to find, how do we get Yuba City growing? And I think you just nailed it on the head. And we've been, as they say a lot of times, we've been in paralysis by analysis. We got a nice plan. It's collecting dust bunnies on the shelf. But until we put a plan in action, we're going to never get anywhere. And so having that component helps. But I am, anybody that knows me, I don't care about how the milk got spilled. It's just, let's don't do it again, and let's go forward. So I'm always forward-thinking. And that's where my line of questions really come in. And with Scott's presentation, and he was talking about right now, if he gets a project, it comes to you. But with your presentation, we're only in the SEDS. So
Correct.
I'm just trying to figure out here, what happens if a project comes to you and it really fits Yuba City, but we're not under contract, you know, with you for those services?
I present the site anyway.
So what?
I do present a Yuba City site when appropriate anyway. And I've done that several times.
Okay. But where does the city fit into, it's like a wagon wheel, and we're all spokes. So where does the city really fit into that? Because we've all got a part. Scott, Steve, Michael's done his part. Send it to you, Brenda. You're doing your part. But at some point, the city's got to get fit in there. And I like the idea of, like you said, having someone dedicated to us that would understand us, that's actually moving in the right direction. But in the process, if, you know, Elon will not move from San Francisco to Yuba City because he's getting the heck out of California, but if he was to move to Yuba City and build a Tesla plant, tell me what that would look like if Scott sent it to you and get it?
So generally, generally, the way the leads work most often is go biz. The state agency gets a lead. They present it to GSAC, and GSAC, and they also send it to us directly. So I may get the same lead multiple times from multiple different organizations. When there's an opportunity, and we have a site here that fits, an RFP can start as 10 pages, but when you get to the almost cited, it's a document that's thick. And it is chock-full of information about water and groundwater and wastewater and air quality and power and all of these things, very site-specific. We do that for the region when we get a lead and when we can respond, which, again, is not very often, because the one thing we have done regionally pretty poorly is plan and provide infrastructure. So it's not often, I mean, it's more often than not that I have to say, I'm sorry, we can't submit a site today for this project, which is very unfortunate. But when we can, we do it.
Okay.
The only thing I would add to that as well, she's absolutely right on the go-biz part, but I would probably say half to two-thirds of our leads that we send out don't come from go-biz. So...
Okay.
But again, they're all, they're hyper-specific. And to Brenda's point, there's a lot of detail you have to turn around in a very short period.
Right. So, again, looking forward, really, where we have to start isn't with so much a key individual. It is setting the priorities and development of that strategic plan, refurbishing that strategic plan, that you're going to play a key role in. So what kind of timeframe are we really looking at? And as your board had this conversation, or is this something you're presenting tonight to us? I'm just trying to get a understanding of where we're at in this process, because it's what needs to happen. Because you set the priorities and goal, get the plan, get the buy-in from the entire region, and then now we're all on the same page, and then we can start filling in those key players that need to be there. So where is EDC at with this?
You've not asked us to do that for you. Not up until tonight have we had this discussion.
Okay.
We're happy to assist you with that. We can walk through the process. We can do that planning. We can start setting those priorities. The one thing that was, made me more aware of the importance of infrastructure than anything was, early in my career, I've been in economic development here for 20 years. Roseville had made major investment in infrastructure 10 years before HP cited there. We should have been doing this 30 years ago when the EDC was standing before a council at the Yuba City council chambers saying these exact same things. I mean, if we're going to do it, let's do it, and let's do it right this time. Let's do it and charge forward and make it work.
I absolutely agree. Back to my question, you're talking about a site, a specific plan for Yuba City, but shouldn't you be developing one for the entire region that you?
It's what the SEDS is, Councilman Shaw. That is what the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy is.
But your prioritization in that, shouldn't it be for the region? Are we just going to do it by city, county? Does Sutter County have a prioritization inside of theirs? Does Live Oak? Does Marysville?
They do with their public works projects, yes.
Okay.
And so does the city of Yuba City. Your projects are listed, and they are prioritized as well. And then there's the regional priorities, which are more broad in scope, right? But yes, you do have, but I don't think there has been enough... yes, you do have, but I don't think there has been enough consideration on, okay, here's our goal. We are going to put in, for example, again, an industrial park on George Washington Boulevard that is 200 acres. Where are we going to get the land? How are we going to get it served? Those are the steps that we have to just keep marching toward. So, okay, we have to secure the property. How are we going to get it? Who's going to pay for that? Who's going to own it? Who's going to manage it, right? Then who's going to manage the project? We still don't have water there, we still don't have wastewater there, we still don't have power, we don't have broadband, all of the infrastructure. How are we going to work together to do that? That's what we really need to define. What do we want? What do we want it to look like?
Right. Okay. I'm good for now. Thank you.
Through the mayor. So, that's right where I was going to ask you. We have land that's already zoned for an industrial park down on, as it's changed in the last five years, that's zoned, quad bit acreage down on Garden Highway and Lincoln Road. But we don't own the land, there's no infrastructure on it, and we don't have the money to do it right now. So, you're saying that you could possibly help the city getting grants or money for us in order to get the land and put the infrastructure there? Because it's all sitting there on Garden Highway. All they got to do is blow it to the levee. So, is the main thing.
And cut an ingress road in, right?
Well, yeah.
I mean, it's got its challenges.
I think that's what blow to the levee means.
Well, I don't mean, I don't mean go through the levee, but to, up to the levee. I'm saying that...
So, it is something that if we're seriously think that that's the best place, given...
Well, our forefathers said...
Right, but is that still relevant? The way the city has grown out, is that, does it make sense to put an industrial park in an area that already has some traffic problems? Not that those can't be mitigated, but it's also very close to housing.
We have a nush part right next door to it. There's one right next door.
We do.
Yes.
But, so we need to, we need to bring those things out, dust them off. Is that where our focus is going to be? Then yes, EDC can march right alongside and help guide the process.
Okay. Well, thank you on that question, and thank you very much for the presentation, Brenda. Thank you for your time.
Well, I agree on industrial park. We're probably going to have ourselves, but that's definitely a conversation I'd love to have at some point fairly soon. But first of all, Brenda, thank you very, very much for being here tonight. Really appreciate it, being part of the, kind of the economic theme of the beginning. It's not necessarily the beginning anymore, the major portion of the initial part of our council meeting. Really appreciate it, really appreciate the information, appreciate the enthusiasm. I think a common thing we've heard from a lot of folks tonight is not only the desire, but the need for a liaison or a front person related to the economy, whether it be at City Hall, someone in your shop, or perhaps even both, to help the communication. I think what I was envisioning, what you were saying, Dave, is in conjunction with a plan, which would include something like an industrial park or some other visions that folks have that we come up with after consulting with, of course, many experts, a plan, and then that front person, the person we go to, the person we have on speed dial that they're the conduit to all the other aspects, which would be Brenda's EDC, GSEC, our local Economic Development Commission, even the Chamber of Commerce, to be part of that conversation, so we can all do our, you know, work together as a team, put the pieces of the puzzle together, and get her done. So, I think this helps quite a bit. Do we, have we had any discussions with your getting the word out to staff as to what you do and what their options are, anything like that?
So, our initial conversations between Diana and I were, you know, let me meet with staff first.
Okay.
And then this kind of got pushed up so that, because of the GSEC request for funding. And I'm happy to participate here.
That's in the queue, though, I'm assuming, it sounds like.
You know, that's my next stop.
Okay. That's all I wanted. It's all good. That's, I'm happy to hear that. Looking forward to further conversations, and anybody else have anything? All right. It's not on my thing here, but anybody from the public care to make a comment, or we have a lot of hands. Margaret?
I just wanted to add, I have been on the board of the Uba Sutter Economic Development Corporation for 10, 11 years. And I've always seen the dedication of the staff that they have, and they are very, they are local, they are passionate, and they are very good at what they do. And whatever information and whatever you need from the EDC, I know Brenda and her staff will bring forward to it, and they are, they're very thorough. And I have noticed, ever since I did get on board, that the city of Uba City was, had just gotten off the membership. And, yes, and I was very surprised, because I thought, God, what an opportunity, and the city chose not to be on top of that. And over those years, I have seen all the opportunities and the grants and the, I said opportunities already, but I've seen all that happen to other businesses in the community. And I think that is something that would be very beneficial to the city of Uba City. And I just want you to take that in consideration, that you're not going to get any more loyalty than from this staff, because they were born and raised here, and they're very compassionate about it. So, I have, I was not born and raised here, but I've been here over 30 years, and I, and they, and I still have that loyalty with the city of Uba City. Anyway, I just wanted to state that, that you're not going to get any more loyal and thorough partnership than the Uba Sutter Economic Development Corporation with Brenda's leadership. And every, every year, we commend her for her clean audits and just how they manage the whole program. It's very awesome. So, that's just my input. Thank you.
That's some very good input. Thank you very much, Margaret. Tom?
Good evening. Is it cold in here?
Yes.
Okay. It feels like an icebox to me.
People think I'm being rude when I do this, but I'm really just cold.
So, I want to mention, I thought that Darren Gale had that job for a while, or for many years, as economic development. And I think that cost about 100 grand a year, and to me was fruitless. So, I wanted to mention that. The situation for economic development, I think you have to consider, too, that economic development is being squashed right now by your health department. And from, I'm talking to restaurants that say they're getting badgered all the time, you know, by Dr. Wu and her program. So, you've got to consider that. Businesses have been plummeted. Then also, consider the inflation with the cost of living. So, all this boils down to the average Joe making a living here in good old Uba City. And, you know, the businesses, I don't think they're offering raises when the cost of goods are going up and everything else is inflating. Then also your cost of living for homes. People are, I mean, the price of homes are going astronomical, too. So, now for me, I live where the rubber meets the road. I am a business owner, and I'm, I've had one truck stolen from me this year, and due to have my second truck stolen from me at the end of the year. And these are from, this is from the state of California, the biggest thief out there. So, I've got a 2000 truck that is rock-solid, but they say I can't drive it anymore. So, they pretty much stole that truck. And then, I didn't notice any of them helping me when I worked my butt off to make the payments on that $60,000 truck that's got 50,000 miles on it, that they're telling me I can't drive at the end of the year. So, and then I want you to consider all the mass exodus out of California, because every week I talk to somebody new in my little world that says they're leaving California. So, I think those issues need to be brought up. And, you know, the best, the best program is opportunity for private enterprise and get the government out of the way. That's what I believe.
All right. Trish, do we have anybody on the computer?
No, we do not.
Okay. That being said, Brenda, I had one question I wrote down, I forgot to ask you. Has there been any consideration or thought, that you're aware of, any thought, you know, particularly with COVID, one of the more conspicuous impacts we've had is our restaurants? Have they been given any consideration of maybe developing a restaurant association?
They are.
They are?
They're a loosely developed coalition of restaurants and property owners, and they are meeting fairly regularly.
Okay.
If I understood your question.
Yes. And so, since we're didn't have the mic, the answer to that question is yes, and they're meeting, it's loosely together, and they're meeting fairly regularly.
Yes, I don't believe they have formed a formal association, but they are meeting fairly regularly. Sandra Drowns is kind of spearheading that.
Okay.
It's no surprise, because she's pretty awesome.
Yeah, I'll give her, I'll give her a ring. Thank you very much.
Yep.
What did I win?
It's for me.
Oh, it's for you. All right. We'll move on to number four here, unless there's anything further. I don't think there is. Number four, thank you, Brenda.